Good afternoon. Welcome to the Franklin County Board of Supervisors organizational meeting, January 3rd, 2023. It's a little past 3 o'clock this afternoon getting started for those in the audience, and then I think we're live streaming as well. So, we wish everyone a Happy New Year. And at this time, I'm going to ask Supervisor Mike Carter if he would lead our invocation this afternoon, and then followed by the Pledge of Allegiance by Supervisor Nick Mitchell.
Thank you, Chris. Nice to see everybody here. I hope you had a good holiday and a great New Years. Let us pray. As the dawn breaks on a new year, let us give thanks for all we hold dear, our health, our family, and our friends. Let us release our grudges, our anger, and our pains, for these are nothing but binding chains. Let us live each day in the most loving ways. Please, Lord, guide this board today and help us to do the very best we can to move our county forward. Amen.
Amen.
The Pledge of Allegiance is with the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, I'd ask County Attorney Jim Gwynn if he would lead us through the nominations.
Thank you, Chris. This is the one time of year, I guess, where I'm more than just the, you know, I actually get to be heard, and I'm supposed to be. And I appreciate that. I think what we'll do is open the floor for nominations for Chairperson for the year 2023. And each, you know, after the nomination, we'll have a second. And if there's more than one, we'll have a vote either way, but obviously, it'll be a different sort of vote, I guess. So, at this point, let me open the floor for nominations.
Mr. Gwynn, I'd like to nominate Mr. Tim Tatum as Chairperson.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Are there any other nominations?
I'd like to nominate Ronnie Thompson.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any other nominations? Is there a motion to close the nominations?
So moved.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? All right. I think the simplest way to do this, and Madam Clerk will correct me if I'm wrong, will be simply to call the roll and have the person's name, have them give you the name of the person that they vote for for Chair. Well, maybe that wasn't the easiest way. Got to correct me on these now.
Supervisor Mike Carter.
Which one? Which one are we voting on?
Oh, I thought-
Just give us the name of the one you're voting for.
To what, sir?
Tell us which one you choose, and we'll just do-
Should we tell her which one?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Supervisor Mike Carter.
Ronnie Thompson.
Supervisor Tommy Cundiff.
Ronnie Thompson.
Supervisor Nick Mitchell.
Tatum.
Supervisor Ronald Mitchell.
Tatum.
Supervisor Lori Smith.
Tim Tatum.
Supervisor Tim Tatum.
B.
Supervisor Ronnie Thompson.
Ronnie Thompson.
I have three for Thompson, four for Tatum.
With that, I would declare that Mr. Tatum has been elected as the Chairperson for 2023, and happily give him this seat.
Tim.
Tim.
Let me just say, I am deeply humbled, and I'll do my best. But I will say this, that I've got some very big shoes to fill, and I count it, have counted it a privilege to have worked with Chairman Thompson for the last two years, and it's just been an honor.
Okay, at this time, we'll open the floor for nominations for Vice Chair. The floor is now open.
I'll make a nomination. I'll nominate Lori Smith for Vice Chair.
Okay. Been nominated for Vice Chair. Do we have any other nominations for Vice Chair?
I've nominated Ronnie Thompson.
Okay. Ronnie Thompson has been nominated for Vice Chair. Do we have any other nominations? Seeing none, do we have a motion to close the floor for nominations?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign? Okay. I guess Madam Clerk will do the vote the same way.
Supervisor Tommy Cundiff.
Ronnie Thompson.
Supervisor Nick Mitchell.
Smith.
Supervisor Ronald Mitchell.
Lori Smith.
Supervisor Lori Smith.
Myself.
Supervisor Tim Tatum.
Lori Smith.
Supervisor Ronnie Thompson.
Myself.
Supervisor Mike Carter.
Ronnie Thompson.
I have four Smith, three Thompson. Thank you for your service.
Just what you said.
And that's okay.
What's wrong with your car?
Sorry. You're okay. You've got to stick together.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Congratulations to you all.
Thank you for your service.
Okay, at this time, we need to set the meeting dates for 2023. It's on the, it's attachment one. Anyone have any questions or comments about that list of dates?
Madam Clerk, do you want us to take a vote on each one of these independently?
No, we, if they're all good, then we can just take a vote on them as presented.
All right. Has everyone had a chance to look at the dates? All right, we will go on to the setting of the county employees' holidays, which is attachment two. Has everyone had an opportunity to-
Mr. Tatum, can we do a motion and a vote for the meeting?
Okay, you want to do, okay. Do I have a motion that we accept the dates and times for the meeting?
I will, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, motion made, a second, that we accept the dates and times for the 2023 Board meetings. Any further discussion? All in favor, let it be known, saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Record show none opposed. Okay, so, the county employees' holidays, which is attachment number two. Everyone had a chance to look over those as well?
I have a question for the county administrator.
Yes, sir.
So, this past year, there was a lot of, like, Monday this week, for example. Is the reason that there's no next days is because they just didn't fall on a weekend?
Yeah, the specific holiday season, Mr. Mitchell, it was the fact that it fell on the, on the weekend. And typically, if it, as an example, since, you know, Christmas or New Years fell on the Sunday-
Okay.
-after is the holiday.
So, as everyone knows, I've announced that I'm not seeking reelection. So, moving forward, the comment I have, and I'm sure the county employees will throw rocks at me later for saying this, but I want to get it out there. The private sector still continues to operate and work. But Monday, it's quite a hindrance to the private business owners in this county when they can't come to the county building, the pool, building permit on Monday. I couldn't go to the bank. It, this whole holiday where if it falls on the weekend, I'm sorry, got to come back to work Monday, we got to come back. So, I would just like to offer that, if moving forward, I think I said this last year, don't be so eager to just accept what the state does. We're here to serve the citizens of the county, and doing that, we need to be open unless that holiday falls on that specific day. So, I would just say that, maybe the last time I get to say it, but it's important to the, to the business owners in this county to be able to get what they need on those days, Monday through Friday.
Any other comments? I think these dates are mirrored, were set by the state of Virginia.
That's correct.
Okay. Okay, no other comments? Do we have a motion that we accept these holidays as presented?
I will, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor that we accept the county employee holidays as presented, let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Let the record show there were none opposed. Board rules and procedures, attachment number three. Has everyone had an opportunity to look over those? Anyone have any questions, comments, or anything about the board rules and procedures for this upcoming year? Okay, do we have a motion that we accept the board rules and procedure as presented?
So moved.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Seeing none. All in favor that we approve the board rules and procedures as presented, let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Let the record show there were none opposed. Annual board appointments, attachment number four. I take it everyone has had an opportunity to see those appointments. We do have vacancy left on the West Piedmont Planning District. That was left by Leland Mitchell when he passed. Anyone have an interest in filling that position? I'm the other representative on there.
They meet in Martinsville, right?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Do we need to nominate, make a motion for, for any of the board members that are currently serving?
Yeah, we need to approve these, all the ones that are listed, but right now, I'm just asking if anyone has any desire to join me on the West Piedmont Planning District. Don't everybody jump at once. All right. Well, as you think about it, contemplate, we'll go ahead and, Madam Clerk, do you want us to vote on all of these, or one at a time?
One at a time, please.
Okay. Starting with the Social Services Board, the current position is held by Tommy Cundiff.
I'll nominate Mr. Cundiff, if you need, if you need to.
Okay.
And I'll second that.
Yes, I've served for, yes. I'm sorry I can't have here, I apologize.
That's okay. That's okay. Are there any other nominations for this position? Seeing none. Do we have a motion that we close the floor for nominations?
So moved.
Okay, do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor that we close the floor for nominations for Social Services Board, let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Okay. So, all in favor of Tommy Cundiff retaining his position on the Social Services Board? First of all, I guess we need a motion for it. Do we have a motion that Tommy, repeat?
So moved.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor of Tommy Cundiff retaining his position on the Social Services Board, let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. None opposed? Okay, TLAC, Lori Smith is the current position. Oh, Lori, are you willing?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Do we, I guess we need someone to nominate Lori?
I'll nominate Lori Smith to continue serving on the TLAC board.
Okay. Do we have any other nominations for the TLAC board? Okay, do I hear a motion that we close the floor for nominations for this position?
So moved.
Second.
Second, okay. All in favor that we close the floor for nominations to TLAC, let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Lori, okay. Do I have a motion for Lori to retain her position on TLAC?
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Okay. All in favor of Lori retain her position, let it be known by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed? Same sign. Okay, then we're down to the vacant position. We'll leave that vacant unless someone comes up with interest of being on that, on the West Piedmont Planning District. The other position I hold, and I will go back on that board if the board's pleasure. I will open the floor for nominations this time for the West Piedmont Planning District.
Mr. Tatum, that was done at our last meeting.
We did that at the last, okay. So, we don't need the nominations?
No, it's noted, the nominations at our December meeting were to reappoint you to the West Piedmont-
Okay.
-and to reappoint Mr. Thompson to the West Virginia Regional Jail Authority, and reappoint you as an alternate.
Okay. So, we're good on all our nominations then? All right. Mr. Whitlow?
Yes.
Okay. There you go. I knew it was some writing that looked like it was mine.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Madam Vice Chairman, congratulations on your appointments, and congratulations, Board of Supervisors members, for another year of service to the citizens of Franklin County. I just have a few things this afternoon in terms of upcoming events. I would just like to remind the Board of Supervisors and the public of a joint meeting between the Franklin County Board of Supervisors and the Franklin County School Board. That will be held in Room B75. We'll have both boards there together this Thursday afternoon at five, at 4:30 PM, I'm sorry, from 4:30 to 6:00 PM in Room B75. And again, we look forward to that meeting, and we will be posting that agenda with the, with the clerks this afternoon and tomorrow, and we'll get that posted. In terms of upcoming dates, on Thursday, January the 19th, is the VACO VML Local Government Day in Richmond. That is the day where it gives the Board of Supervisors and local governing bodies across Virginia the opportunity to meet with the various legislators in the General Assembly in the afternoon. I think there's a luncheon there in Richmond. Today is a deadline, early this week, I believe it is. And so, if any of you have interest in attending that and would like to register, and certainly we'd need to make those arrangements with Maderlin, the board clerk, so if you would just see Maderlin sometime before the conclusion of today's meetings. In addition, looking at other upcoming opportunities, I have had a chance recently to speak with the town manager of Rocky Mount, who noted the incoming mayor, Mr. Holland, Mayor Holland of Rocky Mount, has expressed some interest in getting our board together with the town council at some point in the future. No set agenda, per se, just a kind of get meet and greet and get to know one another. They do understand that we are in the very busy season of budget, and we will likely be very busy over the coming weeks. But I told him if there was interest from our board, certainly between his office and my office, we will work together to try to arrange that.
I think that that's a great idea, Mr. County Administrator, and I think we should find time to get with the town council. I know Chairman Thompson worked hard on trying to build that relationship. We need to keep that going. He was doing a great job at it, and I'd like to see us continue working to improve that relationship, because we need the town, and the town needs us, and we need that good, good working relationship for any future projects.
I echo that.
All right. Mr. Chairman, what I'll do, I'll reach back out to the town manager's office, and we'll try to arrange, arrange something. It may be a meal or time together. It may be at one of your meetings, perhaps during a lunch prior to one of our meetings or budget work sessions or something. We'll find a time to get the two governing bodies together then, and I know they would welcome that, and Mayor Perdue would certainly, would welcome that. In addition, in terms of some other upcoming events and so forth, we have discussed at recent board meetings, as I noted, we are in the throes of the budget season, very heavily now, both from a staff standpoint of reviewing the capital plan, as well as the operational budgets and so forth. And we, as I've noted the last couple of board meetings, and I'll pass these, these along, as in previous meetings with the board, we have some draft dates in terms of the calendar. And now that the county, of course, has gone to twice-year real estate tax collecting more, that has certainly pushed forward the need, if you will, thank you, the need to present the budget in a more compressed timeline. And so, that, that budget tentatively, and I see that the sheriff is here today, that budget presentation is tentatively set, and that will be the schools' budget and the county budget to be presented to the Board of Supervisors on March the 7th. And I'm reminded that the sheriff's department will be holding an accreditation ceremony, I believe, Sheriff, around that timeframe of March the 7th. So, we've got the date set. We can work out the details in terms of the time of when that will be presented to the board. But then the interim, and of course, moving forward, we would look then to hold public hearings on the budget and the tax rates on March the 28th. That gives sufficient time for some further work sessions to be done following for budget adoption in early April, early to mid-April, which gives ample time, or sufficient time, very short, however, to the Commissioner of Revenue for making sure that the real estate and work that she has to do gets completed. That being said, we are looking at Thursday, or Tuesday, rather, January the 17th, at the regular meeting of the Board of Supervisors in the afternoon. Currently, a fairly light agenda that we are aware of for that meeting, to hold our first budget work session, but also in concert with the follow-up with public safety, specifically drilling in on the public safety work that we had previously done this summer. And it works coincidentally, or coincidently, I should say, parallel with the budget. And then, from thereafter, looking at either the Tuesdays or Thursdays each week, and the Thursday, and I say the, or the Thursday, being that it's winter season, you wouldn't know it this afternoon, but being winter season, to have some inclement backup dates as the Thursday, but the primary dates, as we had done previously on the Tuesdays, maybe looking, I know in years past, we've done around the 3 o'clock timeframe, and that gives around six potential work sessions, if you will, looking at this calendar, this draft calendar, prior to when we will really need to know after the February 21st Board of Supervisors meeting, in terms of any guidance, if you will, in terms of tax rates, expenditure, and so forth. And then that gives staff about a week and a half or so, really, to prepare that budget after that. So, again, this is a draft calendar, and just looking for guidance from the board, if those Tuesdays will work, again, afternoon, evening timeframe, and that's just a suggestion of 3 o'clock or further into the evening, whatever would work best, Mr. Chairman, for the board, and any guidance that the board may have as we, as we move forward with the budget calendar and the preparation of the FY 2324 budget.
Right. Anyone have any comments or about any of these dates, any direct conflicts that-
No questions, Chairman.
Okay.
Oh, you said these are tentative dates? How do I know for sure that this will be the dates?
I guess we'll decide on that here in just a few minutes.
Okay.
Want to give everybody a chance. If you, if there's a certain date that jumps out, that you know there's going to be a conflict, then we need to try to iron it out now before we set these dates.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'm going to renew what my statement, that I stated in the November meeting. I will, I will dedicate and will come to one meeting other than the third Tuesday meeting a month. I will dedicate as much time as I have to after it becomes our budget, the Board of Supervisors. But until the county administrator gives it to us, it's his budget. And I don't need to sit in all those meetings listening to, I mean, our, we've entrusted our staff to do the job that they're doing. I think they do a terrific job. I understand and know that they answer numerous calls. That's what they get paid to do, is answer these calls. I will come to one meeting other than the, the regular monthly meeting until it becomes our budget. At that time, I will spend as much time as is needed to give back the county a budget at that time. But all this, all this coming, in my opinion, is, it's not necessary. It hadn't been that way until the last couple of years. It's not necessary. We know what each department does. That's what they're supposed to do, and that's, I'm just going to reiterate that. I'll dedicate one, one other meeting.
Anyone?
Tuesdays is meetings days for my family, so I can probably dedicate Tuesdays. The second Tuesdays a month, I have my fire meeting, so as long as I'm out of here by, you know, 6:30 to make it to that, I'll be fine.
Anyone on this side have any-
I'm okay, Tuesdays or Thursday.
I'm just fine.
So, Mr. Chairman, just for a point of clarification, Mr. Whitlow, am I understanding that we have a choice, preferably of choosing Tuesday or Thursday, with the, with either one of those being the backup date, and that we would proceed with one work session a week? Is that the correct?
Right. That, that, that's, that's staff's recommendation of how it could work.
Okay. I just wanted to be sure. Well, we'll just use the other dates for backup.
That's, that's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Yes.
Okay, keeping Supervisor Thompson's request in mind, when you go over and schedule these dates, let's try to keep them, you know, if something comes up and a department head wants to address the Board of Supervisors, I think, then if they make that clear, and you and staff feel that they need to address the board, by all means, but, you know, the department heads, I don't want them to feel like that they have to put up this elaborate presentation and come before the board. I want, you know, if they want to address the board, fine, that's what we're here for. But if they're fine, if they're good with presenting their needs to you and letting you bring them, then I'm good with that, too. I think that could maybe alleviate the needs for an extra meeting or two in there. But by all means, if the department heads want to address this board, I feel that that's what we, we set up here for, to hear from them. Anyone else? Yes?
Ma'am, just from, from my perspective, I think it would be great if the department heads that come would be prepared to talk about their needs for this budget period, and with justifications for those expenditures, or perhaps reductions in their budget. For me personally, I always like to look at consequences, to make sure that the board is fully aware, if we agree- if we agree with spending or reducing, that we understand the decision that we're making within the context of that given department. And the only other thing I would say for Mr. Nick Mitchell, we need to keep in mind, this is his first budget session with the board. And to the extent that we recognize that for his benefit and not try to narrow it to the point that it's not helpful to him, I think we ought to be a little sensitive to that.
Any other discussion, questions, comments about the budget calendar that we have here? As far, I don't think you need for us to go down here and say we're going to approve all these dates. I think what you need to do, you and staff, is go ahead and set a tentative date for the month of January. We've got January 17th is our regular board meeting, so if you want, use the 24th as, of course, we have a joint session with the school board already for the 5th. So if we do a budget work session on the 24th, that would be the one extra day for the month. And then inclement weather, if we can't do it the 24th, then you have the 31st to fall back on. Or if other board members have a conflict, only 24th and would be better to go with 31st. Use one or, you know, either or, not both of those days. That's what I heard from.
I have a conflict on the 24th.
Okay, so you?
I'll be in the hospital.
Okay, so 31st would be better for you?
Should be out, should be out then.
Okay.
Have surgery on the 23rd.
Okay, so.
So, Mr. Chairman, then for the first budget work session on the 17th and the 2nd on the 31st of January with a backup for inclement weather on February the 2nd?
Yeah.
And then from there, any further work sessions, the following weeks, the 7th and the 14th, leading up to the 21st, I guess?
Right.
Okay. Yes, sir. With that Thursday as backup.
Start at 3:00.
I was going to, thank you Supervisor Mitchell. I was going to ask Chairman Tatum, in terms of, and the board, in terms of the time, what time would work best for the board?
I'm pretty flexible. What time?
3:00 o'clock timeframe should work fine with me.
Start at 3:00. If I'm late, you can just fill me in.
3:00, good. With everybody then?
3:00 is fine with me.
Okay. We will begin working with the departments, Mr. Chairman and so forth, and lining those up. Again, zeroing in on public safety, which is a large component of the budget, both capital and operating, on the first budget and public safety session on January 17th. And then January 31st, we will go from there. We'll get with staff and what department specifically to start preparing for those other work sessions.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, I have a conflict on the 5th. Not sure that I can make the 4:30 meeting. I'll come when I can. I'll have a test run. And I'll be there when I can. I may not be there, but it all depends on what time I get out of the hospital.
Come if you can. Come if you can, or if you want to call in, available for calling in, that would be fine too.
It's hard to.
Hard for a work session.
It's too hard to hear. You can't hear. I probably won't call in. It's just, it doesn't work too good.
Okay. Anything else, Mr. Whitlow, before we take our break?
I think that is all the items for now, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I do think Mr. Gwynn is here to lead us this afternoon through a couple of training sessions after we take a break. But that's all I have and.
Mr. Chairman, I have a question for Chris. The last board meeting, I'd mentioned, you know, the money from the settlement, the opioid settlement. Have you guys been able to, I'm asking because we're getting into, you mentioned public safety work session on budget. You know, I know that it's a huge concern about the cabin chassis and making sure we have them for ordering these next ambulances for public safety. And, you know, the calls just keep getting more and more. They're wearing them out even faster. So do we have an update on that?
Mr. Mitchell, members of the board, the opioid abatement authority was just seated back in November, December. It's a state authority that has really the authority of the funds and how those funds will be utilized. They are just now staffing their department in terms of the distribution of the funds and how they can be distributed and for what reason, you know, if it's a possibility. I will tell you, we do not have further guidance from the opioid abatement authority thus far. To your point, Mr. Mitchell, I think it's a point well made in terms of an opportunity, if there is an opportunity there. We will certainly vet that. I will say, the opioid abatement authority statewide, I think there are around five to seven members on the authority, give or take. The excellent piece of news there is Sharon Buckman with Piedmont Community Services, which serves Franklin County, and Sharon knows us very, very well, has worked some with our new drug court. She's actually been appointed as a member of the opioid abatement authority. And so I do have a scheduled call with her in the coming weeks and plan to have this discussion.
Yeah. I just don't want to see, if you guys remember, a few years ago, I think first year on the board for me, we were able to get like three or four new ambulances and it served us very well. Before that, public safety had broken down ambulances. You could ride by down there at the county line and the parking lot would be full. We can't get back to that position. We need to be proactive to make sure we give them the ambulances they need to serve the citizens. We can't have four or five broken down because we just don't have that many reserve. And I'm telling you, the amount of fire and EMS calls in this county is just, it's just, it's absolutely insane how busy Franklin County is on the fire EMS side here lately. Sheriff's Office too. So I really would like to see us get in front of that, you know. And they're saying two to three years to wait for one. In two to three years, we're, they're going to be junk in two to three years. So we need to, we don't need to get behind on that. We need to really talk about that in the work session. If, you know, we got to use funds out of some of the funds that the county has to go ahead. I mean, you're looking at, you know, buying three $60,000 a pop or something like that, just to have them so that we can get them to the manufacturer to put the boxes on. We really need to get ahead of that and stay ahead of it. It's very important to. Thank you.
I know Mr. Mitchell had a question about the meeting dates that we were discussing earlier. You asked if that was 3:00?
3:00.
Okay, 3:00, time, okay. January 31st and February 2nd, February 2nd is on inclement weather in case we have snow or whatever. All right.
And I, Mr. Chairman, I would like, if we're going to have the work session about the budget with public safety, I wouldn't mind maybe talking to somebody, maybe going myself and seeing some of these vehicles they're wanting to replace, lay my eyes on them myself, just kind of get a feel for it, seeing as I haven't been involved, maybe see it and take a ride in one.
I know they just did, they had a matrix that they used to do a survey on all the fire trucks in the county and I would like to see the results of that matrix.
I would love to look into that as well.
And I've been told that I'm going to be petrified when I see it because of the results. And I know we've got some catching up to do, but.
Mr. Chairman, who did that matrix study?
Public safety, Billy got that matrix.
I mean, who actually went out and reviewed these?
I think the.
It was a truck committee. It was a committee put together that went out and looked at all of them. And I think there's 21 in need of immediate replacement. A truck committee was put together to go out and look at all the apparatus in the matrix. If I'm not mistaken, there's 21 pieces of apparatus that need immediate replacement at this time.
Who makes up the truck committee? That's what I'm curious.
Different members from different departments and agencies. I know it was, what, one from public safety and then you had members from the fire association, different fire chiefs throughout the county that got together and went out and actually visibly inspected these trucks, checked maintenance records and things like that to all plug into this matrix that they had. Some of the reports that I've heard are staggering.
Well, I do know, I spoke to some of them in Snow Creek and they said that everything was going good and well and everything was up to date. And then all of a sudden, they plug it into this algorithm or whatever and all of a sudden, we need 20 something trucks. So I would really like to look into that a little further and.
That's why I want to see the results of it myself.
Well, I want to go see the vehicle.
That's what concerns me is this vast amount that now all of a sudden are in such terrible shape.
Well, the devil's going to be in the detail with the algorithm. How the algorithm is built is going to be a result you get.
How subjective that was done.
Yeah.
Right.
You know, the NFPA on a fire truck is standard 20 years life. Of course, you can get it, what, extra 10 years? So you can, technically, you can get 30 years out of one.
I think that, is it the 10 years is a reserve status?
You can take it out and use it in reserve status for so many years, but there's still a life on these trucks. I think we're pretty good as far as the years of service on most of them. I know we've got some trucks that are, Henry, for instance, their oldest truck is 20, it's a 2000, it was 23 years old. And, but, you know, it's good for another, I think it's actually scheduled to be come out in four or five years. So it's got four or five more years of life. I know the life on these trucks age-wise, we're not so bad. But I think when I use this matrix that they had that plugged in a lot of maintenance issues and mileage is what puts some of them over the top. So that's why I want to see the results of this and see what, I agree, I want to see it firsthand and because that's a lot of money that we're talking about. But in the same sense, it's something that we don't want to get behind on. If it's something that needs to be replaced, needs to be replaced. And that's not something that's sort of like the sheriff of police cars. He has to have so many police cars every year or he gets behind. And if, once he gets behind, it's a whole lot harder to get caught back up. So we want to stay ahead if we can. But I agree with Mr. Mitchell. I want to see that results.
I think it'd be advantageous for all the boards to see it.
Absolutely.
I think. I think all people said it to the board.
What the committee found out.
Yep.
Absolutely.
That was the, that was the follow-up from the July meeting and so we've all been waiting for that. So it will be presented, Mr. Gundoff, to your point.
Okay, good deal.
That was a New Year's email I sent to our county administrator requesting that information.
I haven't seen the matrix myself, so I'm anxiously awaiting that as well.
All right. Anybody else have anything before we go to break and reconvene?
Mr. Tatum, I would just like to ask that everybody keep the families of these two young men in your thoughts and prayers that were in the boating accident at the lake yesterday afternoon. I know the dive teams from Smith Mountain Lake Dive Team as well as state police have been trying to recover them. And so what a tragic circumstance for these families. So I would just ask that everybody keep their families in your thoughts and prayers.
Where was it? Where was the wreck at?
I think it was up in the Pinhook area.
Pinhook, I think.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman, if I could, I'd like to thank Mr. Thompson for his time as being chairman. I really enjoyed it and I think you did a great job. And I want to welcome you two to the new hot seat and look forward to working with you in the coming year.
Thank you, Mike.
Yeah, I like to ride on Mike's coattail. Enjoyed working with Ronnie the last couple of years.
I would like to echo that. As I said earlier, I have some big shoes to fill and it has been an honor working with Ronnie as his vice chair and working with him as chair. Learned a whole lot and I'll continue to learn. And keep your cell phone close by because if I get stumped on something, I call. And, you know, I've always said, if I don't know something, I'm man enough to tell you I don't know. And I'll always do my best. I appreciate you trusting me in this position. And not perfect, but I'll give it 110%.
I think you need to call me because my wife says I'm a know-it-all. But I also would like to echo what Mr. Carter said to Mr. Thompson. I appreciate what you've done for the board. I think you did a good job. I also want to congratulate Lori and Tim for getting into the positions you are. And I'd hate to say it, but you come out of frying pan, jumped into the fire.
Jumped right into the fire.
I wish both of you the best.
Thank you, Ronnie.
You just learned it. You think you've been putting a lot of time in you, a lot more, but I wish both of you the best.
Thank you, Ronnie.
That's yours.
Oh, thank you.
Anybody else have anything before we take a break?
Mr. Chairman, just one other housekeeping item. You should have at the dais in front of you a meeting of proposed meeting dates for the broadband authority. Even though the Board of Supervisors is not necessarily, well, you are the broadband authority, but this body meeting today is not the broadband authority, these dates are reflective of what they have been in the past. When there is business of the broadband authority, the broadband authority has met at 12:00 PM prior to the Board of Supervisors meetings. And so tentatively, we have these dates set, the first meeting, if there is a meeting and likely would be, I'm looking at Mr. Sandy likely, on January the 17th. Hopefully, we'll know back from our body application for our 2023 application. If that were the case, if it's okay with this body, the Board of Supervisors, we could hold that first organizational meeting of the broadband authority on January the 17th at 12:00 PM and then follow suit each month.
Is that something that you need?
I don't think we need any, anything today, just consensus that that's what we'll work towards for this coming year.
Anybody else? You ready, Mr. Gwynn?
Yes, sir.
All right. We will reconvene to B 75 for a work session with county attorney.